I'd like to call the, the May twenty-fifth session of the Monterey City Planning Commission to order, and could we have a roll call, please?
Definitely. First, we have you Chair Brassfield.
Present.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher. No.
Not so much.
Commissioner Latassa.
Present.
Commissioner Milich.
Here.
And Commissioner Reed. Has already let us know he would be absent. Alright, so we have five of our seven members back to you Chair.
Thank you. And if, Chair, if you could explain how the public could participate?
Sure, absolutely. So we just want to go over briefly the instructions on how you can participate in today's planning commission meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, which is a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey where there's a ten second delay, and Comcast Channel twenty-five where there's up to a ninety second delay. If you'd like to provide public comment, please join the meeting by using Zoom or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate any delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, you can use the link or phone numbers listed on the agenda posted at icentermonterey.org, and since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, then enter the webinar ID, which for today's meeting is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide a public comment, you can use the raise your hand button in Zoom at the bottom of the screen, and if you're participating via phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters calling in by phone will be announced using the last three digits of their phone number, or if you're joining us on Zoom, it will be using the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and we ask that you please turn off any TV or computer speakers when connected by phone as any background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised, and the Chair has designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, so we ask that you please stay within that limits. And for right now, we do have a few attendees, and this would just be a comment time for any items not on the agenda.
Actually, let's hold that till if we do our minutes, if we could.
Oh, sorry about that, of course.
Let's go ahead and have the Commission point out any possible changes to the minutes or a motion?
Mr. Chair. So page four of the minutes of the May eleventh Planning Commission, down at the bottom. I can't get it in front of me right now, but the, it says that Commissioner Reed amended the motion to include the conditions shown below. And then there's nothing below, so is that the normal way to do it, or? You know, so it's referring, the bottom of page four refers to conditions that aren't actually shown. Does that matter?
I would assume it does.
So maybe I can provide some clarification there. So I think you're referring to, it says as shown below, and then there's the actual motion in the underlying, and in the underlying is pursuant to finding condition, findings and conditions as presented to include examination of lighting and roofing material by the Architectural Review Committee.
Oh, so it is there?
It is there, I think, and I think that reflects your discussion.
Yeah, I went back and, because I cut the same thing Terry did, but I found it, but thank you for the clarification.
Okay, that's all.
So aside from that, do you, is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the minutes as, as presented, as, as amended, well, not amended, just presented.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have a second? Sandy is a second, Mike and Sandy is a first and a second. Appreciate it, and if we could have a vote?
Definitely. Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioners Fletcher and Reed are still absent, so that passes with five votes.
Thank you. Let's open it up for public comment.
For thing Chair, so if anyone of our attendees would like to share any public comment for items not on the agenda, please raise your hand in Zoom. And it looks like we don't have any hands raised at this time.
Thank you. As I understand it, we're going to have some presentation this afternoon, and as I understand it, it had been requested that we postpone the evening presentation, but we will still have to return at seven to, to do that action. So if we could start our afternoon presentation, Kim, I understand we have a presentation?
We do. The first agenda item I'll introduce is a public hearing this afternoon. It's to consider the appeal of four-twenty-six Cortez Street, which is an appeal application twenty-zero-two-seven-four, which is appealing the Historic Preservation Commission denial of a request to remove the property from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey list. The appellant is Kyle Cherneski, the owner is Monterey PM Investments. And with that, I will turn it over to Christie Sabdo, who is the planner that has been working on this project.
Hi, thank you. I apologize, I just went to share my screen and now I can't even find.
We can find it, we see it.
Yep.
And Christie, I'm sorry to interrupt everyone, I just got an email from Commissioner Fletcher that he had some difficulty with the Zoom link, so I'm just going to resend that, and hopefully it'll save you some time, Christie, and we'll try and get him on here as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Perfect, you can see my screen. Okay, my name is Christie Sabdo, I'm Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Apologize, I'm having issues.
Christie, I can bring up your presentation if you need a backup, if that's necessary.
It's on my other screen, as long as you can see it.
We can see it.
Okay.
I can see it.
Thank you. Again, I'm Christie Sabdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Appellant Kyle Cherneski, on behalf of the property owner, filed an application to appeal the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of Historic Permit twenty-zero-two-three-one, to remove the property from the downtown area historic context and reconnaissance survey list. The meeting was continued from the five-one PC hearing at the request of the applicant so they could be at a four PM meeting time rather than the evening, so that's why we're hearing it today.
And then Christie, I'm going to interrupt you, just for the record, Commissioner Fletcher was able to join us at the beginning of this presentation, and we'll be able to listen to the entire proceedings.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to approve the appeal, which would remove the structure from the downtown area reconnaissance context statement and reconnaissance survey list. As background, the property is a one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven square foot parcel containing a single-family residence that at one time been a duplex, and I pointed to the property four-two-six Cortez Street. It's set back approximately eighty feet. Right here is the parcel, it's set back about eighty feet from Cortez Street. There's a driveway, the driveway is a separate parcel. They will be proposing to merge the driveway parcel with the existing parcel now, and to construct an ADU. So as background, the reconnaissance survey was prepared for Monterey's downtown area. The reconnaissance survey is a windshield survey or a once-over lightly inspection of the area. Typically, the reconnaissance survey identifies resources to be surveyed with an intensive survey, which ones do need that additional evaluation and which ones don't. Four-two-six Cortez property was identified in the reconnaissance survey as seven N or needs further evaluation. It was also listed as a potential contributor to the potential Pearl Street District. And on December tenth, two thousand and twenty, the Historic Preservation Commission denied application HP twenty-zero-two-three-one to remove the property from the reconnaissance survey. There were three findings from HPC that the Historic Preservation Commission concluded this property is a good example of pueblo revival style. The changes to the property that have been made are not significant, and the building still appears as pueblo revival style. The property is a contributor to a potential district, and it is the sixth oldest structure in the district. Upon hearing the appeal, the Monterey City Code, I'm sorry, the Monterey City Code, Section thirty-eight-two-eleven states that upon hearing the appeal, the city council or planning commission shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether in its opinion an error was made. There is eligibility criteria for whether a property should be listed as historic. The Downtown Area Reconnaissance Survey provides that criteria. So it states in there, in order to be eligible for listing in the local, state, or national historic register, early twentieth century properties in the downtown Monterey survey, survey area must be significant under at least one of the following criteria. The National Register of Historic Places, the California Register of Historical Resources Criterion, one, two, and three, and integrity considerations. Intensive survey was prepared by qualified professional Kent Seavey. He stated that the single-family residence was constructed circa nineteen twenty-five as part of the Robinsons Track subdivision. The building is a wood frame construction, rotator and plan, resting on a concrete foundation. Exterior wall cladding is stucco, roof forms are flat and covered in tar and gravel with stucco parapets, and the windows are not original. He did state there have been extensive exterior alterations in the nineteen seventies, including the addition of tile on the door hood, as pointed out here. A replacement of all one-to-one double-hung wood windows with wide horizontal aluminum sliders. And there's also snap-in muttons and window hoods. So the intensive survey under Criterion one and two concludes that no event is significant to the nation, state, or region, nor any significant individuals during the productive period of the lives have been identified with the existing property. Criterion three, the intensive survey states that the building was misidentified in the reconnaissance survey as an example of Spanish colonial style. Mr. Seavey categorizes the building as a much-altered example of pueblo revival style. The presence of good intact examples of both in and around the vicinity of the Robinsons Track make it possible to discern the level of change in other buildings that have been extensively altered over time. He provided examples of good examples of pueblo revival style. And he states that this subject property has lost its historic integrity. In terms of integrity, the residence at four-two-six Cortez retains its original location, however, the original design, materials, and workmanship have been severely compromised by the essentially complete loss of original penetration, significantly affecting the sense of time and place, or feeling, association with their respective periods of construction. And he concludes that the property does not sufficiently meet the seven aspects of historic integrity as defined by SEQA to qualify for listing as a historic property. The intensive survey concludes that it lacks both physical integrity as constructed in nineteen twenty-five and historical significance. The property does not meet National or California Registers of Historical Resources, therefore is not eligible for local designation and cannot be considered a historic resource as defined by SEQA. The applicant also sought a peer review by Dr. Anthony Kirk, a qualified professional. He peer reviewed the intensive survey. Dr. Kirk disagrees with the classification of the property as pueblo revival style. He states there's no mention of that style in the downtown reconnaissance survey. Dr. Kirk characterizes the house as an example of Spanish colonial revival as referenced in the downtown area reconnaissance survey. He states this is a small point, however, as Mr. Seavey makes evident, the house is not architecturally or historically significant, and both houses have lost their historic integrity. Dr. Kirk agrees with Seavey's conclusions. The city hired a qualified professional to conduct a review of the intensive survey and the peer review by Dr. Anthony Kirk. And here are the conclusions of May Clovis's peer review. Under Criterion one and two, four-two-six Cortez is not associated with important themes within their context such as the sardine industry, military expansion, or Japanese settlement. Clovis agrees with the conclusions of Mr. Seavey and Mr. Kirk that the buildings do not meet these criteria. Under Criterion three of Design and Construction, May Clovis does clarify in the report that to be significant under this criterion, that the resource must meet at least one of the following requirements. It must embody distinctive characteristics of a tight period or method of construction, represent the work of a master, or possess high artistic value, and that's in the National Register of Historic in fifteen. So under Criterion three in her review, she states it's not a sole example of Spanish colonial revival that resides within the survey area, and due to alterations, they do not possess enough characteristic to strongly represent the context. No architect or master builder was associated with the property, and the property does not possess high artistic value because they do not express aesthetic ideals for design concepts. Clovis concludes the property at four-two-six Cortez is a modest structure and does not qualify for individual listing. Under integrity, Ms. Clovis references the downtown area context statement, which explains that properties eligible under this criterion must possess integrity of design, materials, workmanship, feelings, in order to be eligible for listing. She does conclude that she concurs with Mr. Seavey and Dr. Kirk's conclusions that the property at four-two-six Cortez no longer possesses the necessary aspects of integrity to qualify for this criterion. In conclusion, all three qualified professionals concluded that the property does not meet the eligibility criteria, lists the buildings as significant historic resources in the National Register of Historic Places or the California Register of Historical Resources. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the appeal, which will remove the structure from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey. I'm, staff is available for questions, the applicant is online, and we also have the qualified professional May Clovis, whom the city has hired.
Thank you. Does the applicant or an agent wish to make a presentation?
Actually, before that, Chair Brassfield, since May Clovis is an extension of city staff on this particular application, I would ask if Ms. Clovis has any additional comments regarding the independent analysis that she conducted?
I appreciate that, that's fine, but I was going to ask if she comment after the presentation so we had all that information, but that's, that's fine. Let's go ahead with the, with her presentation.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioner members. I'm May Clovis, and I was asked by the city to review Dr. Kirk's peer review as well as Mr. Seavey's initial evaluation of the property. And as staff has explained, I've found that the building was not eligible for listing under those three criterias, whether there was no important person associated with the property, there was no important event that happened at the property, and then finally that it did not have enough distinctive characteristics to be considered an important architectural style. And I think this is really a telling point because Dr. Kirk and Mr. Seavey could not agree on what kind of style it was. Mr. Seavey said it was pueblo, Dr. Kirk said it's Spanish colonial revival. So clearly, the building didn't have enough characteristics of either one of those styles to be considered a, a, example of a, a really good example of either of those styles. So I'd also like to just mention too, in the context statement, that it does say that in this Pearl Street District, they listed forty-nine potential contributors to this district. And, but they did say that none of them rose to the level of individual distinction, that they could be considered contributors, but per Bulletin fifteen, a contributing building must have integrity. And as Mr. Seavey lays out in his report, it is clear that the building does not have integrity, so it cannot be considered a contributor to the district. So that concludes my comments, and I could take questions now, or if you prefer to wait until all the presentations.
Thank you. Any questions by the Commission at this point?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a, I don't have a question for Ms. Clovis. I do have a sort of a process question for staff. So the, when part of our Planning Commission's findings to, to approve an appeal of an HRC denial, this is a de novo hearing, I think it's called, so there is new evidence allowed at this kind of hearing. And it's, it's kind of troubling to me that we're being asked to find that the HRC erred in their decision when they didn't have the benefit of these two excellent peer review analysis. So you see what I'm saying?
So I'm happy to provide some clarification there. First, the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed both Kent Seavey's work as well as Dr. Kirk's work. That was part of their decision-making process, those reports were available. A de novo hearing means that additional evidence can be submitted at every level of appeal, and that oftentimes happens in appeals, that additional public testimony, additional information will be presented to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately to the city council. So that's actually what de novo means, is that we, additional testimony is being accepted. And so I think we are on right track as following our municipal code and following the procedures that are outlined.
Oh, no, I agree with that. I'm just thinking that, you know, sometimes when you're a member of the HRC and you get this sort of stinging, you know, rebuke from the Planning Commission that they erred in their decision, it's, it's nice if we can soften it somehow, because if, you know, at least one of these letters, they didn't have the benefit of that letter to, in their decision-making process. I'm looking at Anthony Kirk's letter here, it's dated January twenty-seventh, twenty-one, and I believe the HRC meeting was December tenth. So I'm not, you know, I don't want to split hairs, it's just, you know, I'm trying to find a nice way of dealing with the HRC so it doesn't look like we're just slapping them down.
I agree. Kim, is there?
May I say that the way to do that is that based upon the evidence presented to the Planning Commission, okay, we find, alright?
Okay, that's fine.
That takes away the, the sting a little bit, because they didn't have that evidence.
That's all I have. Otherwise, I'm happy with the presentations. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Kim, I have a question of, on what basis did the other commission deny the application?
So they had four findings for denial, and they're included in your packet, and let me just pull them up here. And Christie, did you have a slide, I think, that went through those four?
I do, and I just wanted to say something really quick in terms of why the language was in the staff report in terms of, you know, an error was made. That it's under the Appeal section of the Monterey City Code thirty-eight-two-eleven that I stated in my presentation. that I stated in my presentation where it said, upon hearing the appeal, the city council or planning commission shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered, and shall find whether, in its opinion, error was made. So I think that's, you know, where that language comes from.
And then Kristi, if you could bring up that slide, and I'm looking at the resolution right now. And the Historic Preservation Commission, in their resolution concluded that the property is a good example of pueblo revival style. So they didn't agree with the historians' conclusions. They concluded that the changes to the property that have been made are not significant, and the building still appears as pueblo style. So they didn't find that the window changes and the hood changes were significant, and that they found that they continued to conclude that the property is a contributor to a potential district, and it is the sixth oldest structure in the district. And we're happy to bring up that slide. We went through that finding. If you would like to see that again. We also have the benefit. Geraldine Povello is representing the Historic Preservation Commission today, and she is on this call as well. So as part of the public testimony, I'll recommend that we obviously hear from Ms. Geraldine Smith Povello.
I actually would, I think that would be a good, this would be an opportune time to hear from her on the thoughts of that commission, so if we could.
Geraldine, are you able to unmute yourself? I see that you're on our call.
Our six will unmute you if you're on the phone.
I actually see that she's on the Zoom link. She's here as one of our panelists. Maybe while we wait for, oh, there she goes.
I had to tap at the wrong time, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to point out, it was a full board of commissioners that attended, me, Michael Napoli, Chris Barlow, Harold Dawson, Carol O'Neill, Kathy Cullum, and myself. So we were full force in terms of all of those people and their backgrounds and experience. And whereas we understand those guidelines and appreciate them, some buildings that we have deemed historically significant or not designed or built by important architects for important people, so they look more common for common people, but we think they do contribute to a historical district. And we've approved even Mills Act that windows could, windows that were changed could be replaced by historic style windows to make a property more intact because over time, many of the original windows fail just because they deteriorate. And you can't just keep them because they're historic. Some people have tried to repair them, and their attempts haven't been to a high level of historic replication, but that can be mediated. Also, I, so that gives you a little bit of our thinking. It was without a lot of thought that we considered it. And we, we do understand that over time, you can get more information, but we feel it's our position to speak for the historic properties, in a sense. And sometimes I think it's important to have a second look, even a third look at these properties, and make sure that indeed, we want to take the status away because the, and I haven't had any contact, of course, with, with the owner. But sometimes an owner is very quick to say, let's take it off history. It interferes with our project. It's an extra hoop to go through when it's deemed historic. And then with a little more information, they say, you know, if we supported the historic opportunity, we could even go for Mills Act. It actually helps us out with taxes that we are able to use to continue the care of the property, which is always more expensive than an older property. And this, this property could be a nice little property that could provide housing for middle-income people as it does now, middle-low, different starting-out families and others. And, and I like the idea that they're actually proposing additional housing, and I think it would, would, you know, it's great that there, that there are these opportunities in the city of Monterey for, for housing in attractive-looking settings that look historical, even if they don't fit the exact superior level of what looking historic can mean. So thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts.
Thank you. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Or actually, to the applicant? Then, Sarah, let's go ahead and ask the applicant or an agent if they would speak.
Chair Brassfield, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Anthony Lombardo, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Seavey, who you can't see, is just off-camera here with me. That's, there's Mr. Seavey's hand in case we need a more technical discussion of the report. In answer to Commissioner Lataza's statement, I don't think we need to have a stinging rebuke of anybody this evening. You know, I think it's simply a matter of a mistake based on the fact that, by the commission, based on the fact that there are standards that determine whether a property is historic and not historic. And the standards are not those that the Historic Preservation Commission applied to this property. This is a legal designation, which has to meet certain legal criteria in order to be determined historic. I, I listened, I was not representing the applicant at the Historic Preservation Commission. I listened to the, to the, to the hearing, and I, I believe that they had both Mr. Seavey's work and Dr. Kirk's work before them. After, after the Historic Preservation Commission appeal was filed in discussions with the staff, the staff does not have historic resource expert, so to speak, or resources to have someone like that on staff. So the staff wanted to retain the services of a qualified expert. And I would say there's probably no one who's been doing this longer in Monterey County, other than Mr. Seavey, probably, and May Clovis has been. She was a former county historian, retired Monterey County historian, and looking at her CV, obviously, she's eminently qualified under this opinion. So the city retained Ms. Clovis as an independent third-party expert to provide the independent review that the law requires jurisdictions to provide. Because of course, Mr. Seavey and Dr. Kirk, while I don't believe they would compromise their professional integrity to reach a result that an applicant wanted to reach, even if we asked them to, Ms. Clovis, of course, is working for the city and is reviewing this on behalf of the city and giving it her independent analysis of the conclusions contained in these reports. I'm glad to see that Ms. Clovis agreed. So every historical expert who has reviewed these properties has made, this property has reached the same conclusion, that it does not qualify for listing as a historical resource. As staff said in the beginning of their presentation, the, the list on the county's reconnaissance survey said that more evaluation was needed because they were effectively a drive-by survey, windshield survey, as staff stated. The findings of the Historic Preservation Commission are simply not those that would be necessary to find this property historic. As Kim mentioned a moment ago, being a good example of a style, even if that were true, which according to the three experts it is not, is not the basis for listing. The changes to the style were not significant enough to have lost the integrity of the home. That's also incorrect. For example, the previous speaker mentioned the fenestration of the building. The window openings, windows that have been changed can be put back, but only in the original opening. So in other words, this house, it's not just that they changed windows out, they changed the openings. So the windows are no longer the dimension and location that they were in the original house structure. So that, per se, is a disqualifying feature. Being the sixth-oldest house in the neighborhood is not a standard for determining whether something is historic or not. So Ms. Clovis, Dr. Kirk, and Mr. Seavey all went through the actual legal standards for determining whether a structure is historic. And as you could see from those reports, concluded that the structure is not historic and have recommended its removal. So we have the original survey done by Mr. Seavey, the peer review done by Dr. Kirk, and then the peer review of the peer review and the report done by the city's independent consultant, who've all reached the same conclusion that the structure is not historic. So we support the staff's recommendation that the, that the property be founded not to be historic and grant the appeal without rancor or, or rebuke. And would request that you follow the staff's recommendation to grant the appeal and find the structure not to be historic. As I mentioned, Mr. Seavey is here with me if you, if you'd like any further specifics. But I think the staff and Ms. Clovis have done a marvelous job outlining the, outlining the standards which we have to use to determine historicity and the reasons why the structure is not historic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Any other presentation by the applicant? Tony, at all?
As I said, only if anyone has questions for Mr. Seavey. He's here with me. But other than that, I think the staff reports done, the staff report and the staff have done an excellent job outlining the situation.
Hearing that, let's, any questions of Mr. Lombardo? Okay, then, Sarah, let's go ahead and open it for public comment.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair. So just want to give a friendly reminder to the public that if you would like to participate and share a public comment, you can please do so by joining the meeting via Zoom or by calling the Zoom call-in number, which is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, then entering the webinar ID, which is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. And just taking a look, we do have a few attendees. I don't see any hands raised at this time, and it doesn't look like we have any phone in attendees.
Thank you. In that case, let's bring it back from the public to commissioners' comments.
Well, I have a comment to make. In a larger context, I think it's a really good idea to be looking at these properties in this particular area. It was not too long ago that the planning commission approved additional infill housing development for this area east of Alvarado Street. And the two blocks, city blocks, that are bounded by Figueroa, Del Monte, Anthony, and Camino El Estero, with Cortez Street going right down the middle, is the one where we already have an application for a large apartment building to be constructed, I think, behind the Stall Motors lot, that it's bounded by Anthony and Cortez on the other side. So looking at these properties and making sure that all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed before people go ahead with, you know, big construction, I think is a really good idea. That being said, I drove by today, and I did get out of the car. So it wasn't just to drive by. And the houses on those particular blocks are in terrible condition. And so I, I think there would be a big appetite for reconstruction. The people who have done the historic analysis have really taken their time to do yeoman's work on detail and requirements, and why these, well, this one in particular, and then we have two more coming up, should not be on the historic list. So it sets a good precedent, I think, for evaluating the properties as we expand the housing opportunities in the city.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna support the staff's recommended approval of the appeal. And I just wanted to compliment the, you know, the process and the staff, you know, for doing this peer review. It really is a good way of sort of double-checking and giving us, you know, a really sound basis for our decisions.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else?
I want to thank the city for, for bringing in May Clovis to, to do a check on this. I'm, I'm sure that that takes, that takes, you know, some of the, some of the sting out of, out of the, the, the HPC decision. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the, the denial of the appeal because, you know, I think that we've got, we've got some very heavy hitters here for, for historians.
Thanks, Mike.
You mean granting the appeal? Mike, you mean granting the appeal?
Granted the appeal. The appeal, well, kicking it, well, kicking, taking it off the, the, whatever the, the word for it.
All right, sir.
You're supporting the granting, the, of the attorney, the reversal of the denial of the appeal.
Okay, now I'm confused.
Oh, you're supporting the appeal.
But just for clarification, supporting the appeal will remove the property from the historic.
And that's what I want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Likewise.
Thank you. I wanted to say that I, the work by staff and the applicant, going through a lot of Mills hearings, requesting the historic status, it almost, we have a lot of experts who are not afraid to express their thoughts. And I appreciate that there, even among them, there is some discussion about what is and what is not. I, I do have a question for staff. If, for instance, it was recommended that the maintain on the list, would they basically, in order to make a Mills request, have to remove the shade over the door as well as return the windows to original size?
So the question about must is always a difficult one. A lot of times, as we're going through the process, the Historic Preservation Commission may specify things that they want to see happen to the property. And it's varied widely over, over the years. Sometimes, we have, I guess, let me just back up. We have attached to all Mills Act contracts a proposed maintenance schedule. And so sometimes that maintenance schedule is as simple as the roof needs to be repaired, or it needs to be replaced. Other times, that maintenance schedule is much more extensive, depending on the condition of the building. And if there is an alteration to the building that needs to be reversed, there's usually a pretty robust discussion about that at the HPC. And it's an area where I see that they, they deliberate. They really talk about, you know, is it eligible? Does that window need to be changed? And it's a pretty fluid discussion.
Thanks, Kim, for the clarification because whereas I, I think I'm going to support the, the application request that, I just wanted to make sure that the public understands what we're going through here because we're, we're not talking about just the actions of the, of the commission, but we're also talking about the actions of another commission. So, and I, and the staff has done a great job of planning, getting it plain for us to acknowledge. So, thank you. I'll hear for a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the appeal of the HR decision, HRC decision on 426 Cortez.
approve the appeal of the HR decision, HRC decision on four twenty six Cortez. I was wondering, I I don't want to be ridiculous, but the the sixth finding in the resolution does say that the an error was made by the the HPC, sorry. And the is there any way to to soften that and and say that, you know, maybe in parenthesis, although they didn't have the benefit of the peer review report?
I think Steve covered that, that in line.
I know, I just I'm just looks, I'm just sort of thinking we could phrase this one finding as a to to avoid the appearance of a rebuke. What do you think, Kim?
And so I'm looking so and can, oh, so we're not rewording the municipal code and condition five or but number six finding. You could say, as a result of the peer review by qualified professional Meg Clovis, the Planning Commission decided to remove the property from the list and remove the word error.
Yeah, I would I would appreciate that. It's just, you know, the HRC, I'm sure the HPC works very hard and and I I know the city code does use the word error. So if it's approvable in that fashion, I would like to make that substitution.
Before we before we do that.
Yeah.
I, Kim, is it grounds for appeal that we didn't follow the code if we leave that out?
Well, it does say.
That, see, that's what that's what bothers me, that someone may have grounds to appeal our decision and the grounds that we didn't find follow the code, which requires us to find that they erred before we can overturn their decision. I don't like doing it any more than you do. But I think it's something that we should consider.
So the code says, shall consider the record in such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether, in its opinion, an error was made. So I think you can clearly reference the new, you could clarify the additional evidence is provided by Meg Clovis, qualified professional. And you know, it's stronger if you use the word error because it's directly tied to the code. If you want to soften it, that's up to you.
Well, I I actually, as the motion maker, I do agree with Steve that that's, you know, no reason to create a vulnerability there in our motion, in our our resolution. So, you know, maybe what we could say is in this finding number six is is as a result, an error was made by the HPC. You know, and then in parenthesis, although they didn't have the benefit of the this peer review Clovis report.
That should work.
But keep the word error. I see Steve's point.
And does Jennifer have that all down?
Yes, I've been feverishly typing away here. So I do have the, see, I think I thought that you want to keep the verge, the verbiage as is. You don't want to change it?
Well, yes, keep the verbiage as is, but with an additional parenthesis, you know, after, you know, maybe just after the entire, at the very end of of finding number six in parenthesis, it would say, you know, although the HPC didn't have the benefit of the peer review Clovis report.
Okay, so I got that. I basically say the Planning Commission approved the appeal of four two six Cortez Street with all of the information about the HPC denial and resolution number and permit number. And then at the end, I just have a rough note for it now. But I did get your verbiage, verbatim, adding to add to the motion that I just announced. It would say, as a result, an error was made by the HPC within parentheses, although they did not have the benefit of the Meg Clovis peer review at the time.
Perfect.
Of their decision.
Yeah, at the time of their decision.
Yes, I did add that. So at the end of the original motion that you would see if there was no changes, I would just add with the with the added verbiage stating, although they did not have the benefit of specifying the HPC, that they did not have the benefit of the Meg Clovis peer review at the time of their decision.
Right.
That sound good?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So I have
Yeah, but second.
I'll second that.
Sandy's the second, so we have a first and a second. Let's do a roll call.
All right, Chair Russell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
That was yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Latasa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed is still absent. So thank you. That passes with six votes.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, and let's move on to the next item.
Ten days appeal.
Oh, correct. Thank you, Steve. If anybody chooses to appeal this, they have ten days to the city council.
Hey, I think the chair introduced the next item. Agenda item number four is to consider an appeal of four thirty and four thirty Cortez Streets, AP twenty zero two seven five, which is appealing the Historic Preservation Commission denial of a proposal to remove the property from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list. The appellant is Kyle Chornetsky and the owner is Monterey PM Investments LLC. And Christie Sabdo was the planner on this item as well.
Hi, my name is Christie Sabdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. And let me try this again, sharing my screen. See if it goes any more smoothly. Okay.
Looking good.
Okay, so appellant Kyle Chornetsky, on behalf of the property owner, filed an application to appeal the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of HP twenty zero two three two. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve the appeal, which will remove the structure from the downtown historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list. And so just showing the subject parcel kind of as in relation to the one we just heard at four two six Cortez. It's next to the driveway adjacent to Cortez Street. And the structure itself is set back approximately fifty feet from Cortez Street. It's a little over three thousand square feet, and it contains a duplex. And so just showing again where four twenty six is located from the previous agenda item and the duplex up front here, four thirty and four thirty two. You can see the parking in front adjacent to the street. So again, a reconnaissance survey was prepared for Monterey's downtown. Reconnaissance surveys are windshield survey or once-over-lightly inspection of an area. And for four thirty, four thirty two Cortez, the property was identified in the survey as seven N or needs further evaluation. It was also listed as a potential contributor to the potential Pearl Street District. So as background, the Historic Preservation Commission denied the application to remove the property from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list on December tenth. HPC's decision was based on three findings. The Historic Preservation Commission concluded that the property is a good example of a pueblo revival style. The changes to the property that have been made are not significant, and the building still appears as pueblo style. And the property is a contributor to a potential district, and it is an older structure in the district. Monterey City Code mentions under appeals that upon hearing the appeal, the city council or planning commission shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether, in its opinion, error was made. So their eligibility criteria is listed under the downtown reconnaissance survey. It lists specifically what the criteria includes. It states, in order to be eligible for listing in the local, state, or national historic register, early twentieth century properties in the downtown Monterey survey survey area must be significant under at least one of the following criteria. So they're listed here, criterion one, two, and three, and the integrity considerations. Kent Survey Kent CV prepared an intensive survey for four thirty and four thirty two Cortez. The property was constructed in nineteen thirty four as part of the Robinson Track subdivision. The building is a wood frame construction, a regular in plan, but they central by resting on a concrete foundation. Exterior wall cladding is a textured cement stucco. Roof forms are flat and covered in tar and gravel with stucco parapets, and most of the historic fenestration has been lost. In terms of alterations, new one-to-one vinyl double hung windows were replaced. They did replace the original wood features and two or three early frames that are remaining. The rest of the building envelope exhibits a mix of varying types of aluminum sliders, compromising the original visual character of the building. And the staircase, the has lattice work railing, it is undated. The intensive survey concludes that for criterion one and two, no event of significance to the nation, state, or region, nor any significant individuals during the productive period of their lives have been identified with the existing property. Under criterion three, design and construction, the intensive survey states the building was misidentified in the reconnaissance survey as an example of Spanish colonial style. Mr. Seavey categorizes the building as a much altered example of pueblo revival style. The presence of good intact examples of both in and around the vicinity of the Robinson Track make it possible to discern the level of change in other buildings that have been extensively altered over time. And as I stated previously, that he had an example of a intact pueblo revival style to compare it to. In terms of integrity, the residents at four thirty, four thirty two Cortez retains its original location. However, the original design, materials, and workmanship have been severely compromised by the essentially complete loss of their original fenestration, significantly affecting the sense of time, place, feeling, and association with their respective periods of construction. The property at four thirty, four thirty two Cortez do not sufficiently meet the seven aspects of historic integrity as defined by SEQA to qualify for listing as a historic property. The intensive survey concludes that the property lacks both physical integrity as constructed in nineteen thirty four and historic significance. The property does not meet the national or California criteria and is not eligible for local designation as a result and cannot be considered a historic resource as defined by SEQA. Qualified professional Dr. Anthony Kirk conducted a peer review of the intensive survey. Dr. Kirk disagrees with the classification of the home as pueblo revival style. He states that there's no mention of that style in the reconnaissance survey. He characterizes the house as a Spanish colonial style as referenced in the downtown area survey. He states, this is a small point, however, as Mr. Seavey makes evident, the house is not architecturally or historically significant, and both houses have lost their historic integrity. Dr. Kirk agrees with his conclusions. The city hired qualified professional Meg Clovis to conduct a peer review of the intensive survey and Dr. Kirk's peer review. Under criterion one and two, she states that four thirty and four thirty two Cortez is not associated with important themes within their context, such as the sardine industry, military expansion, or Japanese settlement. Clovis agrees with the conclusions of Mr. Seavey and Mr. Kirk. I should have said Dr. Kirk, that the buildings do not meet these criteria. And under criterion three, Meg Clovis clarifies that to be significant under this criterion, that a resource must meet at least one of the following requirements. Embodied distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. Represent the work of a master or possess high artistic value. She concludes, under criterion three, that the property is not a sole example of Spanish colonial revival that resides within the survey area. And due to alterations, they do not possess enough characteristics to strongly represent the context. No architect or master builder was associated with the property, and the property does not possess high artistic value. They do not express aesthetic ideals or design concepts. Clovis concludes that the property is a modest structure and does not qualify for individual listing. And under integrity, Ms. Clovis references the context statement, which must explain that properties eligible under this criterion must possess integrity of design, materials, workmanship, and feelings in order to be eligible for listing. Ms. Clovis concurs with Mr. Seavey's conclusions and Dr. Kirk's peer review that the property no longer possesses the necessary aspects of integrity to qualify for this criterion. Meg Clovis agrees with Mr. Seavey's evaluation and Dr. Kirk's subsequent peer review. She concludes that the property does not meet the necessary criterion for listing in the national or California registers of historical resources and therefore is not eligible for local designation and cannot be considered a historic resource as defined by SEQA. In conclusion, all three qualified professionals concluded that the property does not meet the criteria, the national and California criteria. And staff recommends the planning commission approve the appeal, which will remove the structure from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey. Staff is available for any questions. And again, the applicant is here as well as qualified professional Meg Clovis hired by the city.
Any questions of staff's presentation? It's kind of ditto to the last one, basically, the way I see it. But let's move on to the Ms. Ms. Clovis.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Meg Clovis. And again, I just wanted to reiterate what the context statement said, which was that all these properties in the Pearl Street, the potential district, did not raise to the eligibility thresholds for individual listing. And then they, the context statement said they could be considered as contributors. But per bulletin number fifteen, contributors must have integrity. And in this case, just as in the last, this building does not retain integrity. So note, it does not have significance under either or any of those three criteria, nor does it have integrity. And therefore, I believe it should be removed from the list. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, if you have any.
Any questions of her? Thank you. Let's move on to the applicant, if we could.
Evening, Mr. Chair, Anthony Lombardo. Again, I will repeat what I said last time, basically the same as as someone said. It's the same thing over again. The city retained Ms. Clovis to review the works of Dr. Kirk and Mr. Seavey. She reached the same conclusion. Again, this house has had this stairway addition and these window openings change dramatically. You accommodate these aluminum frame windows, and it's it's not a good example. Mr. Seavey included an example on Anthony Street of a of a of a home that maintained its integrity. So this isn't it. So we respectfully request that you support the staff recommendation and grant the appeal. And Mr. Seavey is still here with me in case we have any questions for him.
Any questions? If not, then Sarah, let's bring it up for the public comment.
First thing, Chair, so I just want to do a quick reminder. If you'd like to participate in this meeting, please do so joining Zoom Gov. And the meeting is posted online at isearchmonterey.org under the recent tab. Or you can call in at eight three three five six eight 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 six four and enter the webinar ID, which is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And in to participate and provide public comment, please use the raise your hand button in Zoom at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're providing comment over the phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute one called upon. And I'll take a look here. We do have a couple of attendees, but we do not appear to have any hands raised for public comment at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. And let's bring it from public comment back to the commission.
The one thing I would like to ask, Commissioner Smith Cavello, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the conversation? If so, you're welcome to unmute yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for unmuting me. I seem to have trouble doing it on this computer. Thank you. I'm here to just represent the thinking of the Historic Preservation Commission at the time that we evaluated the project and And we don't have anything further to add.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim, for catching that. Let's bring it back to the commission comments.
I have one, Mr. Chair. I guess it's just a sign to Meg Clovis. If we were looking at these buildings from the other direction, as in, we wanted to have them deemed historic and get a Mills Act contract. What would you say about the buildings?
Good question. Well, in order to get a Mills Act contract, and I'm just speaking from my experience with the county, a property must be historic. And I'm afraid that with these examples, they've lost integrity. Once you lose integrity, it's gone. So can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. So once you lose integrity, integrity is gone. That's why it's so important to protect historic buildings before they do lose integrity.
I know that that was one of the arguments that the HPC had. Is that they're approving buildings for Mills Act or for historic, or I guess H2 historic property, but it looks like it can go either way in some of those cases. And in this case, it seems as though it's only going one way.
Well, truthfully, as I said, to be a Mills Act property, you must be significant. And to be significant, you must meet one of those three criteria plus have integrity. So you can't have just significance and you can't have just integrity. You have to have both.
There's at least three of us here who have Mills Act homes. So I guess we've seen this and done this.
And so, and your properties are designated properties. Am I correct?
Correct.
Right.
And a lot of times there's qualifications on getting that, as Kim pointed out earlier.
Right.
Any other questions? I have a question. I don't know to whom yet, but I'll frame it. This is what I would term workers' housing. And from the age of it, it's been for a long time. Back in the 1960s, not 1860s, 1960s, I went into one of those places just visiting a friend on several occasions. So at that time, it was student housing. But do we have a classification of these worker housing? I know down on Cannery Row, we have those little tiny ones. But this kind of, it is historic in Monterey, that we had to have housing for the people who worked here. Is that even in the classification of housing? Kim?
So our current zoning code defines housing or classifies housing as either single-family or multifamily residential. So those are the current definitions we're using. Of course, multifamily residential could either be, it could serve a wide variety of income types. You can have very high-end multifamily residential, and you can have lower-end multifamily residential. So we don't have, other than our deed restricted affordable housing, where it's deed restricted to a specific level of affordability, which we have 500 units in the city that are deed restricted in some form. We don't have a subclassification. I will tell you, though, in planning circles, there is a, like you look at a lot of the recent journal articles, and it talks about middle housing, you know, housing for the middle, you'll see that term. So obviously, that relates to density, but it's not an absolute. Not all dense, you know, housing built at a certain density is affordable. So I don't have a specific term for you to rely on.
Thanks, Kim. In that regard, I would comment that the United States has done what Europe does, is they have more of the middle ground, where you have multiple residentials on plots. Here, it's typically single. But with the multiple families, they have fewer tall buildings and more shorter buildings, but lots of them because they don't do single-family dwell. And I think that's an argument that's being made across those countries. We need to make some changes. But on this item, I would like to hear for a motion.
I'll move. I'll move that the planning commission approve the appeal of 430 and 432 Cortez Street, appealing the Historic Preservation Committee denial, and removing the property from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey list with the same ending commentary that new information from Ms. Clovis was present at this meeting and not at the original HPC meeting, whatever you said, Jennifer.
Yeah, I'll second that. Give a first and a second. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to support the motion. And I just wanted to comment that this one isn't quite as easy as the one behind. You know, the parapet on this house does have that little steps kind of parapet detail on the corners, and it has that central bay, little bit more going on with this one, but not much. And it is, I really do, as an architect, I do support the city's basic approach towards historic resources because putting those, you know, plastic windows in houses like this is really unfortunate. And it's, you know, most owners wouldn't agree with me because it's, you know, some of those manufacturers, they're really good products, but they're shiny and plastic, and they aren't appropriate to historic buildings at all. And again, I think, one little comment I wanted to make was, okay, so the HPC meeting was December of 2020. Kirk's letter was January 21, and Clovis's letter was April 21. So as far as I can tell, HPC didn't have either one of those, either Kirk's or Clovis's letter. It doesn't matter because I think the motion is making it anyway. It's a totally insignificant point, but I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay, let's ask for a vote.
Yes, we're losing confidence here.
Thank you for your patience. As I finish typing that last comment, now for the vote, we have Chair Brathfield.
Yes.
And I should Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich. And Commissioner Reed is absent, but that motion passes with six votes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nice to see you tomorrow.
There's Kent's hand. Good night.
I can't see him.
For the record, this decision is appealable within 10 days on forms available at the planning office or actually online now. Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you, Kim. This concludes our presentations for the afternoon session. And we will reconvene at 7:00 PM, basically per forma, but we still need to reconvene at 7:00 o'clock.
And we need a
Thank you all. Yep, we need to have at least a quorum. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Back to the May 25th version of the planning commission, I'd like to reconvene. And I believe we'll have an announcement here in a moment, but if we could for have public comment for issues not on the agenda.
First, I believe we will need to do a roll call and I'm having technical difficulties. The program I'm using to take minutes on kind of just crashed a little bit, but I can do a roll call at least for the records. And if I miss anything, I will watch the video later to get those minutes, but to start.
Proceed.
Definitely. First, we have Chair Russ Field.
Present.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed is still absent, it looks like. Great. So thank you all for coming back to our afternoon session. I will also take this time to announce public comments. And members of the public are encouraged to join our, our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast channel 25 with up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate delays. To join the meeting using Zoom from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers listed on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find it under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial 833-568-8864. Once again, 833-568-8864. That number is toll free. If that one doesn't work, there are other numbers posted on the agenda again at iSearchMonterey.org. You can try one of those if that first number doesn't work for you. And again, that number is 833-568-8864. After you call in, you will want to enter the webinar ID, which is for this meeting, 1619908039. I repeat, 1619908039. If promoted for or prompted for participant or ID, press pound. Details for detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. Once you're in the Zoom meeting, if you are by phone, please raise your hand by dialing star six to unmute. Oh, sorry, star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself when called upon. If you are joining using the Zoom app or, or website, there is a Zoom raise your hand button in Zoom. Public commenters calling in by phone will be announced using the last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be called in, in order of hands raised. And you will have three minutes to provide comments. And right now I see no attendees and no hands raised. And again, this is for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Jennifer. There was no scrolling of the numbers on this time. It's FYI.
So it does not show up on our meeting in, inside of Zoom. It does show up at the bottom of the YouTube publication, I think. Or I don't, the YouTube video has a phone number information on the end or on the bottom. And so does the Comcast channel 525 version also.
Just not used, didn't see it. So I don't know if it's there. Anyway, next thing on the agenda is I understand we have a request to put this forward at a different time of day. Do I have, we need Do I have, we need any presentation, Kim?
No, the applicant has requested that the agenda item for North Fremont Street be continued to June 8, 2021.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to?
I have a question.
Sure.
How, how, what time is it? This is what the second or third request for a continuance?
It'll be the, well, the first time the Planning Commission continued it to a date certain. Based on the public comment received, and so that was continued to this meeting. This time, the applicant is requesting continuance based on correspondence received. Last Wednesday or Thursday, I believe it is from the public. So this will be the second continuance of the item.
And the first time that the applicant has requested to continue.
Correct.
Do we have a rule of thumb or a house rule regarding how many times we will. Continue an item at the applicant's request?
No, the. The applicant can waive the Permit Streamline Act and request as many continuances as they would like.
All right. And we don't have any sort of rule about how if you are entitled to like three or four continuances. And after that, you have to. Refile and reapply. And the reason I mention that is because it takes up staff time. And I, it just doesn't seem to me that. That we should have open and continuances. Just something to think about.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then I would still ask for a motion.
A motion to what?
To postpone the meeting.
Or it's actually to continue the public hearing to June. Believe it's eighth. Let me just pull it up. I was to June 8.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Dan, is that you?
Yeah.
So Mike and Dan is the first and second. And any discussion? Then I'll ask for a vote.
I'm going to leave first, Chair Russ Field.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed is still absent. So the continuation, the continuation is approved. And we will continue this item to June 8, 2021.
Thank you. Any commissioners' comments? Actually, let's go to, to. Kim and your updates.
We do have a couple of clarifications on just things that are coming up. The city council will be considering the appeal for 508 Del Monte, which was. The Planning Commission's denial to remove the property from the reconnaissance survey list on next Tuesday, June 1st. I believe Ms. Crivello will be attending that meeting on behalf of the HBC. If the Planning Commission would like to send a deputy, they are invited to do so. In addition, the city received an appeal for 200 Glenwood Circle. And I have on here that it would be considered on July 20. I found out the council most likely will cancel the July 20 meeting. So I believe it'll be on the July 6 meeting. And so those are two appeals that will be coming forth in front of the city council.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that. July 20. Uh, scheduled for that appeal, given that this sort of draconian shock clock everybody is under.
So July 6 will be the date.
And you mentioned earlier that you wanted to talk about state actions.
Oh, I just, I'm going to share with you all. There's a new court case that was just published about SB 35. And so we're starting to see court cases being published based on the recent housing laws that have been adopted. So they've been in place for about a year to a year and a half now, many of them. So I'll make sure to share. There's some newspaper articles and I'll make sure to share those with you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Oh, a comment. So first, I can't attend the next hearing, so I won't be here on June 8. And the second thing is, I'd like to request that we agendize an idea. And maybe we won't do it, but I wanted to suggest it that we have a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. That. That meets every so often to look at the sea level rise issue. Along the waterfront of Monterey, you know, maybe twice a year or something. I thought if we agendized it. We could, you know, maybe it would be like, you know, Director of Public Works and Kim. And I don't know, some members of the planning commission, just an idea, maybe that doesn't meet rules of some sort. But I thought it would be. It has the potential for such drastic planning implications. It could be wise to to sort of. Have a subcommittee meet every so often about it.
Well, it's happening so slowly that about once a decade, you ought to do it.
Okay, there you go. Blah, 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 blah. Well, as I understand it. By 2030, we're supposed to have Del Monte in serious water.
Underwater, underwater.
Well, the particularly the underground, our portion of it. So I don't know. And no matter what your thoughts are on the topic, if we don't talk about it. That's also an oh, well. Well, my main focus of the subcommittee, if that's the way it's handled, would would be to just. Talk about the big strategy of, I think Ken had mentioned like mapping, for instance. We need a really consistent datum. Survey of the entire waterfront of Monterey. That's all in the same, you know, datum. Going up into Lake Alastaro and just start collecting all the information and eventually this would all be going towards engineering. You know, engineering stuff. And I know there's a lot of grant money issues and it's complicated, but it's, it wouldn't hurt to just try to. You know, just to sort of formalize it in some way.
Agree. 2030 is tomorrow.
It's the Lighthouse Tunnel that freaks me out.
Yeah.
Almost a decade away, you know. 2030.
Actually. It's not. We're already down one year. So. By the, you know, time you get to this end of this year, we're. Serious dent, but.
Don't we want to make sure we're not stepping on toes?
Well, that's why I'm suggesting we agendize it and have staff come back with a, you know. Maybe a report on it, you know, maybe this isn't the way to do it. Maybe this is a council thing.
Yeah, it's something that we can, we can just decide to do, or do we have to petition the council to appoint a group?
I would think the better part of valor would be to. Find out if the council wants us to look at it.
Yeah, maybe that's the answer.
If they did, if they did want us to look at it, wouldn't they have referred it to us by now?
I don't know. You know, complacency certainly is not our friend at this point.
Right.
Well, you know, we've had a number of reports from experts that have been hired by the city. I know, I noticed you've been active and I've been, you know, listened to him and read the reports. And it's I sort of like an iffy thing, like what's to be done? It's like, there's no money to do it, what needs to be done, if it needs to be done. And probably it does, but I don't know, I just think. It almost looks like a, I know this wasn't your intent, but it almost looks like a power grab of some type.
Well, I, you know, I'm not interested in a power grab.
I know that. I know you know that.
I, I approach it from an engineering attitude. And I think it came up in the previous hearing. That we don't have all the data we need. So we, you know, at some point. Grants have to be written and money has to be gotten to have survey information. That's the first thing we need is just information. And my understanding is we don't have that, you know, really consistent information for the entire waterfront. Well, and I think a lot of it is that Kim is going to be in the position to know if there's any discussion need or not. Or if it could be just a report on progress. Because we're already seeing properties come before the commission that will be impacted. According to the reports we got from experts by 2030. So just, we need to keep that in mind. So. Yeah, maybe if the, if the subcommittee happened and they met once a year or twice a year. And the Public Works Director said, well, here, here's the, you know, here are the maps we need and we need, we're going to need a million dollars for all the surveying or whatever. You know, maybe that's the end of the meeting, you know, it's, 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 I don't think it can hurt.
No, I agree with you.
Thanks, Jerry. Kim, any thoughts?
Yeah.
I think I have a lot to think about. And integrated into sort of our, our staff thought. So I would appreciate the opportunity to bring it back to you after I look through a couple of issues.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Any other comments? Then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.